All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. To all persons interested or affected by the action, zoning board of appeals, you're hereby notified pursuant to section 11 of chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, June 14th at the times indicated. Call to order introduction of board members. To my left, Mark Hanson.
Present.
Herb Bodenseek.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Here.
And I am Jacob Dewey, acting chair and present. First order of business approving minutes from May 10th, 2023, and May 24th, 2023.
Motion to approve?
Any a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. First order of business is appeal number 2023-006 Denise M. Anderson, trustee of the Anderson 77 Parker Road Dominique Trust has petitioned for two variances from section 240-13E Residence CRC District bulk regulations and 240-36 Resource Protection Overlay District RPOD. The petitioner seeks two variances to unmerge lot 1, 40,075 square feet from lot 2, a developed lot containing 43,915 square feet pursuant to the plan prepared by Sullivan Engineering Consulting, Inc. The subject property is located at 77 Parker Road, Austro Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 117 as parcel 135. It's located in the Residence CRC zoning district. This is continued from March 22nd, 2023, April 12th, 2023, April 26th, 2023, May 10th, 2023, and May 24th, 2023. Paul Pennard has recused himself from this matter, so it would be the four of us sitting on it. And I... Is someone here to represent the applicant?
We haven't heard anything, right?
No.
Do we want to just push to the third?
We can not hear it.
Well, we can make a motion to continue it without the applicant wanting it continued, but we also have continued this since March, April.
Yeah.
And there's...
Good to know.
Again, this goes with this. There's public trying to follow this whole thing, and it's like, when is it going to happen? There may be members of the public that came here tonight for it.
Could we just... Could we push it to the end?
Deny the continuance.
For tonight and then see if he...
Yeah, I think we can just... We'll move it to the end of the agenda and see. And then, yeah.
Probably stuck on Fannie's lane.
Because we could deny the continuance, and then it just has to be re-noticed, which I think at some point becomes fair, that people get it.
Depends if it's with or without cause.
Yeah.
So if you deny with cause, then that's... That's it for two years.
Well, yeah, if we denied it, yeah, that would be the case. Okay, so let's just go on to our next items, and we'll come back to that, and then we'll make a decision on... At, you know, at that point. An appeal number 2023-001773 South Main Street LLC has applied to modify condition number four of appeal number 2019-005 to allow an accessory... additional accessory structure on the property and has applied for a special permit in accordance with 240-131 dot 4E from relief from minimum yard setbacks. If the board finds it necessary, the applicant proposes to install an approximately 12-foot by 20.5-foot in-ground pool approximately three feet from the Westerly property line. The applicant seeks to modify condition number four of appeal number 2019-005 to allow the proposed pool as an accessory structure. The subject property is located 773 South Main Street, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 185 as parcel 013. It's located in the Craigville Beach District CBD and the Centerville River North Bank CRNB Neighborhood Overlay Zoning Districts. We did receive a letter from Attorney Cox requesting to continue this to July 12th. Attorney Cox is here if anyone has any questions or someone wants to make a motion to continue.
Motion to continue to July 12th, appeal number 2023-011, time 7:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that one is continued. In appeal number 2023-012 Donald J. McKinnon, trustee of the MCCM Realty Trust, has applied for modification condition number four of appeal number 2022-008 to allow an additional accessory structure on the property. The applicant proposes to construct a freestanding garage/ workshop as per condition number four of appeal number 2022-08. Approval is required for this accessory structure. The subject property is located at 910 Main Street, Catuot, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 035 as parcel 090. It's located in the Residence FRF zoning district and the Resource Protection Overlay District RPOD. So sitting on this will be all of our members present. Attorney Cox?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter, McLennan, and Fish here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Donald J. McKinnon, who is the trustee of the MCCM Realty Trust, who is seated at the table to my left. Seated next to Mr. McKinnon is Craig Ferrari, who is an engineer with Down Cape Engineering, which did the plan for this site. The subject property of this application is 910 Main Street in Catuot. It's in the RF zoning district and the RPOD overlay district. The lot contains about 0.71 acres, of which about 0.61 are upland. The property is developed with a single-family dwelling that meets all of the zoning setbacks. The only non-conformity on this site is this lot is undersized as required under the RF and RPOD district. The board may recall there have been a couple prior zoning decisions that benefit this property and an abutting property. Those are outlined in the addendum that we submitted, but I'll just briefly touch on them. So the first one, which I'm going to refer to as the original variance, was a variance that this board granted back in July of 2021, and it granted variance relief to the applicant and also to the property owner of 33 Oyster Place Road, which is a separate entity. It authorized a land swap between the two properties and then some additions to the dwellings on each property. About nine months later, both applicants, Mr. McKinnon, who's trustee of the MCCM Realty Trust, and the property owner at 33 Oyster Place Road Trust jointly again applied to the board for some very minor site changes versus the site plan that was approved in the original variance decision. None of those changes affected the nature or the form of relief that was granted by the original variance, and the board approved that modification request as appeal number 2028-008 back in April. As part of that modification decision, the board included standard conditions for residential properties. One, build per plans that were attached to that decision, and secondly, that there would be no construction of accessory structures without further approval from the board, conditions that this board typically imposes. And so that brings us to the current proposal this evening. I think, Anna, do you have the ability to pull the site plan up? That might be helpful. First, I just want to note that the only applicant that's before you this evening is the 910 Main Street property. There are no changes proposed or sought as it relates to 33 Oyster Place Road, which was also part of the prior variance decisions. All of the construction on that property is, I think, complete or nearly complete, and a certificate of occupancy has been issued by the town for 33 Oyster Place Road. So that's not part of this modification request tonight. Rather, the only applicant that's before you again is the trust that owns the 910 Main Street property. As you'll see on the site plan, we are seeking here tonight a petition to construct an accessory structure on the property. The structure is an approximately 498-square-foot detached building that would be used as a garage, shed, and workshop. It's a custom design. We did submit architectural plans as part of the filing. It's, I think, a lovely design for the site and consistent and compatible with the surrounding area. The accessory structure meets all of the zoning setbacks, so there's no relief required in terms of the setback. Section 24043 of our ordinance allows by right accessory structures that are customarily incidental to subordinate to and on the same lot as a residential use. But for that condition in the prior variance decision, we would not be here seeking relief for this proposed accessory structure. I would also note that if you look at surrounding properties in the nearby vicinity, there are many, many properties with detached accessory structures of similar size to what is proposed on this lot. In addition, we think this is an appropriate level of development for the lot, and if you look at 24091H of the zoning ordinance, which doesn't directly apply, that's when you demolish and reconstruct on an undersized lot. But that section sets out some by right allowed coverage and floor area ratios, which, if you were to apply those here, this project as proposed would continue to comfortably meet those requirements. So that section has a 20% by right lot coverage. Here with the proposed accessory structure, we're looking at 15.6%, so again, below the 20% by right. And for the floor area ratio, the ordinance spells out a .30 floor area ratio. Here with the proposed accessory structure, we're at .26. So we would suggest that this additional proposal, this accessory building, continues to represent a level of development on this property that the ordinance deems appropriate for residential undersized, non-conforming lots, such as what is existing here. In addition, I would just note that the proposal does not require any new or additional variance relief, and it doesn't change the nature or extent of the variance relief that the board has previously granted on this site. Finally, I would just, again, note it's in the addendum, but the proposed accessory structure has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and also by the Board of Health, and they've all signed off on that. I do have a couple of comments on the suggested conditions that are in your staff report, so I would like to go through those at the appropriate time, but I'll pause to see if the board has any questions of me or the applicant. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Cox, the applicant?
I do. Is there... I noticed in the conditions, they were talking about both septic systems. Is this hooked up to... I mean, is there a kitchen here? Is there a bathroom here? What's going on in this?
In the proposed accessory structure, there is a bathroom that's proposed. There's no kitchen. It's not intended for living purposes. It is just a bathroom for... There's a workshop that's proposed, so it's sort of a convenience bathroom for working in the workshop.
Is it a half bath or full bath?
A half.
It doesn't really show in the plan.
Half or full bath?
Half bath.
Half bath.
Okay.
That was my only question.
That was my only question.
Denise, any questions?
Yeah.
All right. Herb, all set?
Yep, I think weren't the two septics already covered in a previous?
So, yeah, they... These are... This was kind of an exciting feature of the prior relief that the board had granted and also that the Conservation and Board of Health were also very excited about. So Mr. McKinnon and his brother, who's the trustee of the other lot, decided to upgrade to these nitro septic systems that remove nitrogen, and DJ is also an engineer, so if you have any questions about it, I'm sure he can answer them far better than I. But it's a really innovative, new way of reducing nitrogen that's coming out of the septic, and I think you've said it, you've got it in place in one of the lots, and it's working very well so far. Yep, good memory.
All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, or?
I do have some comments on the conditions. In fact, actually, I have a little red line that I was going to hand up of a couple of them. I thought that would be easier.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Thank you.
So the first condition, in the staff report, it references both properties. I think it's sort of a carryover from the original decision and the modification decision. This relief that we're seeking is only for 910 Main Street, and so what I've done with that first condition is struck reference to the 33 Oyster Place Road. That property would still be burdened by the other decisions, but we're not proposing to modify anything as it relates to 33 Oyster Place Road. The second condition doesn't change the intent of this condition in any way, but what we have seen, Mr. McKinnon actually pointed out to me that this site is on an area where the town is considering sewer in the future. And so rather than have to come back to the board to seek permission to connect to sewer, which is required by law when sewer abuts a property, we are just clarifying that the septic systems have to be maintained in perpetuity until sewer is available and the properties are connected by sewer. Again, by statute, if sewer abuts your property, you have to connect within a certain period of time. And then the last one was just reflecting the last revision date of the plan that was submitted with this application.
Okay. Any questions to that before we go for public comment? Okay. All right. So we will open for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this matter? Okay. I don't think... Did we receive anything? No. Mm-mm. All right. Anyone... No one wants to speak to it? All right, I will make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, public comment is closed, so that brings it back to the board for deliberation. Does anyone have any?
Just a quick question. Was there ever a discussion with the health department or any... Or town staff about putting any conditions in regarding habitation or any future habitation? Current until there's sewage?
You... There's only four bedrooms in the building and a four-bedroom septic, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so I think this septic would be the limiting factor. There's four bedrooms in the house, and it's a four-bedroom septic that's on this going proposed as part of the site, so.
But if sewer was to come through there, that would release that limitation.
Right.
Depending upon how Board of Health is going to limit things in that area.
Yeah, depending on... We don't know what that's going to be, but...
On your point, are we back to the board now?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're from Extona.
On your point, I would like to see a condition in here that it's not used as a... Doesn't have a bedroom, and it only is confined to a half a bath, not a full bath, and expanded to a full bath. So it's constrained to a half bath and can't be used for sleeping quarters.
Well, I mean, it could, in theory, be a gym or something, in which case maybe there could be a shower, but I think the habitability, there is... This is not to be like sleeping quarters kind of thing.
Why? I'm just... I'm playing devil's advocate here, but why? Like, what are we trying to restrict?
Yeah.
Because it could be an accessory apartment. It could be at some... At some point in the future, like...
That's true.
Yeah.
I was only asking if it was a discussion.
From a personal... I don't think the lot is overbuilt, that we need to restrict it. It couldn't be a one-bedroom apartment or, I don't know. I mean...
Except for the septic, yeah.
Well, yeah, it would be only when sewer... When sewer came through there, which is on the plan. I don't mean... I just... I'm just... That's my opinion on it. We see some that it's like, whoa, let's not add more to this lot, but I don't know.
The only reason I even ask is it's being put forth as a workshop.
Right.
That's the only reason I asked.
Yeah.
So if workshop becomes bunkhouse in two weeks, it was just a question. I just wonder if it ever came up in discussion.
I mean, we could condition it that it can't be, you know, expand until sewer come, until sewer is there.
Well, my point is if it's going to become a family or an ADU, then it has to be applied for and approved.
Oh, ADU could be done by right, potentially. Because I don't... This isn't conditioned anywhere.
We're not trying to...
That's right, it can be.
I wouldn't want to make it more difficult in that sense to have to go back if it's by right.
Yeah.
So it was just a question.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Does anyone want to make findings?
Mark has the bigger question.
I had to read the accessory... Affordable apartments already, so you guys can...
I'll do it.
Do you have it up?
We have the script here.
This has to do with appeal number 2023-012 McKinnon, trustee of MCCM Realty Trust. Donald J. McKinnon, trustee of MCCM Realty Trust, has applied to modify condition number four of appeal number 2022-008 to allow an additional accessory structure on the property. The applicant proposes to construct a freestanding garage/ workshop. As per condition number four of appeal number 2022-008, approval is required for the accessory structure. The subject property is located at 910 Main Street, Catuot, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 035 as parcel 090. It is located in the Residence FRF zoning district and the Resource Protection Overlay I make a motion to grant the variance number 2023-012...
Modification.
Modification. To grant modification of variance 2023-012 based upon the finding with conditions.
Okay, so we're modifying...
We're modifying the variance 2022-008.
Are we creating a new variance? What are we... Why are we at 2023-012?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you are...
We're making a motion to modify variance number 2022-008.
Right.
Condition number four.
Right, but these become essentially the new conditions that would affect this property. The conditions get sort of carried over as...
With new variance, right?
Yeah, essentially.
But we don't need to make variance findings?
No, because it doesn't... This doesn't require a variance, and it doesn't change the nature or extent.
But we're creating a new variance.
You're modifying the old variance.
So we... The motion is to modify condition number four of variance 2023-01... No, excuse me, -2022-008, condition number four.
Yeah.
Yep.
And now it becomes a new variance, is 2023-012. All conditions remain the same except condition number four.
Which would allow an additional accessory structure on the property.
Actually, if I could... I think what the board has traditionally done is rather than say all conditions remain the same, for ease and simplicity, you sort of add new conditions to the modification, and that's what this is proposing. So these were staff's recommended conditions. They're essentially the same as the last decision, just updated to reflect the current proposal.
Okay.
Is this your red line or staff's red line?
So the red line is my text.
And staff has seen the red line?
I just handed it into staff right now.
Okay, all right.
Okay, well, we can say it many different ways. Is there any questions as to what we're doing?
No.
Jenna, do you feel... Are we... Are you comfortable with the way we're making findings here?
I think that's fine, yes.
Good, good.
All right, so we're... We have a motion on the table.
Right.
To approve variance number 2023-012, which is modifying variance number 2022-08, condition four as read, and we're going to have... With conditions to follow.
Exactly.
We have a second for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the variance is approved. Paul, do you have some suggested...
Suggested variance, conditions one through six. We will adopt condition changes on one, two, and three of the staff report, so that condition number one reads variance number 2023-012. A modification of variance number 2022-008 is granted to Donald J. McKinnon, trustee of MCCM Realty Trust, to amend the plan referenced in condition number four of variance 2022-008 to refer to the revised site plan submitted with this petition, which depicts an accessory structure on 910 Main Street, Catuot. Condition number two reads, "The septic system on the subject property shall be maintained in perpetuity until such time as sewer is available and the property is connected to the municipal sewer system." Condition number three will now read, "The site development shall be in substantially conformance with the plan entitled Site Plan of Number 910 Main Street and 33 Oyster Place Road, Catuot, Mass., prepared by Down Cape Engineering, Inc., dated April 29th, 2021, and last revised on March 13th, 2023." Conditions four, five, and six remain as proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I thought I had made one other change. I forgot to bring it on this. It's in condition four. I was going to add the word additional after construction of, so it says there should be no further expansion of the structures or construction of additional accessory structures without approval from the board.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think that makes it more clear.
So four now reads... Condition number four now reads, "There shall be no further expansion of the structures or construction of additional accessory structures without approval from the zoning board of appeals." Conditions five and six remain the same, I think.
Yes, thank you.
On the staff report, June 1st, 2023. All right, a vote to approve Paul's conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, so you have the variance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. What else do we still have tonight? So did... Anyone here from Attorney Schultz?
I did.
Yeah?
Yeah, so apparently he sent something at 4:30. We're just trying to confirm. He said he sent it again.
I don't have my work here, so...
He was...
Well, then let's just vote to continue.
But just a date to next meeting?
It was a request to respectfully continue to next meeting. They're looking... He's looking for a five-person quorum.
Seven o'clock.
So, yes, waiting for... Waiting for Aaron to sit on the board.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue appeal number 2023-006 to our next meeting, which is June 28th, 2023, at 7:01. Any a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that is continued. Correspondence, we didn't have any... Any matters not reasonably anticipated? We don't have any discussion, board discussion regarding requests for withdrawals and continuances? Do we want to have that now? We're missing Aaron, but...
Go for it.
Should we go for it?
Okay.
So what does... So Paul prepared some in-depth information, did some serious research to see what other municipalities and boards have done for this, you know, thing that continuously happens like this one, like today. You know, I know that there's people... We've got public comment. We've had people that came to meetings that, you know, have now been noticed or haven't been noticed, but noticed once back in March, and now we're to the end of June. You know, is...
And they don't get noticed. They only get...
They don't get... Only get noticed once, yeah.
Continuance, you only get noticed once. So that is the concern that we initially addressed and what this discussion addresses. I'd like to... Now, you know, I won't go through all the research and everything. I canvassed, I don't know how many towns and cities, most of the Cape, and my conclusions were consistent with that. I'd like to draw your attention to "I," though, which says we can do a number of... I'm sorry.
It's all right. I think you were getting picked up a little bit.
Which says we can do a number of things and the pros and cons. So, you know, we can do nothing. Or we can... Let me get there. We can make some decisions on the proposed procedures, which we go through, and we can create some formal document to publish stuff. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is to take you through the decision process here, which would be G and H, and have a discussion on those items, which I've tried to lay out to keep them narrow in specifics, and then decide whether we want to go forward with that or not. If we decide to go forward, then the next step would be I would propose that I put this together in a forum with all the conditions on it that are in here for your review, for the board's review and approval. I'd like to pass it through the planning board, of course, and also through the building... Chairman of the building.
Yeah, I think we should probably loop in Counselor Clark.
Yes, right.
As our liaison too and say, hey, and I don't, you know, just have her... You know, she may run into the town attorney's office and say, hey, it's like... And, you know, this could be something that becomes a town board... Counselor Clark could say, you know, present to the council and say, hey, we want this to the council and say, hey, we want this sort of policy to be, yeah, on the planning board, on the Board of Health, on, you know, on any of the.
The planning board has expressed interest to, they said it would be nice if we were all consistent, but they haven't, I haven't shared, per agreement, I haven't shared this with anybody other than those who are sitting here plus Aaron. The cities, the, I talked to in person, in person talked, if you will, telephone by telephone, and a number of the towns on the Cape are extremely interested in what we come up with, if anything, and they asked me to share that with them, which I wouldn't do until we go through our total process and then come up with something.
Yeah.
Okay? So if you go to G, and this starts with withdrawals, and we have, there is two situations under both withdrawals and continuances. One is in person or not in person, and one is writing or not in writing. And so with withdrawals, start out with first in terms of appearance, either the petitioner or the representative. We have a choice to say that an appearance by the petitioner or the representative at a hearing is not required if a written request that states the reason has been made prior to the hearing. Now, that assumes that notice has been given, okay? This, all these assume that notice has been given. And since we have to make a ruling, whether it be withdrawal or continuance on cause or no cause, then there has to be a reason stated. And up to now, mostly, I think Anna has got that, and a lot of the lawyers will do that because it's required in a lot of other places, too. So the first point for discussion now is withdrawal appearance. It's either is not required, is required, or is required even if there is a written request that's been made prior to the hearing. Those are the three decision points.
I remember David Hirsch was very adamant that there was a time window that they could make a request, and then it closed, and then they had to come in person. That was sort of his, his deal, because, you know, if we put the work in to be prepared for the meeting, they should have the respect to come to the meeting and explain why they.
And there is.
Opportunity to ask some questions of why, why we can't go forward with the matter.
Right, and that is, if you look at this, 11, 12, 13, and 14 follow this, which talks about timeframes and other requirements in there. So as to not pollute the discussion. I kept it at that, and these, and then go into, if we, if we agree, then we go into the, to the next series of questions. So the first one is, do they have to submit in writing with a reason? And that's a yes or no answer, discussion.
I, well, I think it approaches, there can be a personal reason, and there can be business reason, and I think personal reasons, if it's health-related or anything other, we're not privy to that necessarily.
Well, you gotta, you have to rule cause or without cause.
Understand.
So there's gotta be a cause or without cause.
And it's just, it's really hard, you know, and when the public has made the time to, you know, be here and, you know, and it can just be this sort of last minute, we can't, you know, so I feel like there was a period of time where attorneys were, maybe before Zoom or something, you know, they had backup plans, and, you know, something came up, they had someone else in their office, a partner or someone step in. But it does, to me, from it being on the board, I don't even know how long now, it seems like there's, we're getting, it's more and more and more and more now. It's just like constant. I don't remember that.
And if we were to take this up, I mean, would we let a later date determine a window, 48 hours, 72 hours, something prior, would that be determined at a later date?
You know, I personally think if they're continuing, it should be by Monday.
Yeah.
By end of day, Monday, if it's gonna be in writing, and they're not gonna show up, because I think, I don't know for sure, and Anna, maybe you can answer, that would give enough time, we could post an amended agenda on the website that would say, that could have that on it or not.
Okay, wait, you're jumping ahead here.
Sorry.
The decision on the table is a personal appearance. Either it is required or it's not required for withdrawal.
I feel like with proper notice, I don't think.
Proper notice is not required.
Not required.
Is my, my take is.
That's how I feel about it.
Herb, what do you think?
I agree, you mean, you don't, if you're withdrawing, you don't have short to say it.
So it would, it would read something like this, "An appearance by the petitioner or the representative at the hearing is not required if a written request that states the reason has been made prior to the hearing." After those, but prior to the.
And that's for withdrawal, not for continuance.
That's for withdrawal.
Yep.
Okay, now, what about with continuance?
Okay, no, wait a minute, no. So, so just to be sure, we do not require a petitioner or representative to come before us, even if a written request has been made or not.
Or withdraw.
Withdrawal, for withdrawal.
Long as there is notice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the question of, that's appearance. This is a question of writing, okay? So there's three choices here. A written request that states the reason for it is required for withdrawal, whether the request is made prior to or at the hearing. In other words, I don't know about at the hearing. I mean, we have to have a reason, I was saying, in writing to make it easier for Anna, because that has to be part of the record, upon which we make a decision with or without, so.
I don't think with a withdrawal, we have to ask for a reason. Personally, I don't think so.
Continuance, I would feel that.
Wait a minute, you have to, you have to say with cause or without cause on a withdrawal and a continuance. So if it's with cause or without cause, then you have to have a reason stated by the applicant.
I mean, I think the applicant can, can request a withdrawal without prejudice, and they don't have to say anything beyond that.
Well, there has to be a reason.
Why does there have to be a reason? Why do we have to know what the reason is?
You wouldn't want to influence a further petition if they came back to the board. If we, well, if we knew there was some, something that they were trying to fight or that they were having trouble with, I don't know if that would influence a decision or not. Perhaps it wouldn't.
The MGL requires, the MGL requires the board to make a vote on a withdrawal with cause or without a cause. Now, the board has to say, can you make that without knowing why?
I see.
I don't know why you care.
Because the law says, well, because.
If someone says I'm withdrawing, it's, I mean, I can think of one instance where I think they saw they were never gonna get it approved. So why do we need to know what reason they had?
Well.
Or about others, their properties were getting sold, and so they.
Then you were withdrawing with cause. Or do you want to skip, I mean, the question is writing, and I feel whether they want a continuance or withdrawal is gonna be in writing, so that we can make a foundation ruling with or without cause, which we really haven't been doing, which is said, okay.
I mean, we're forcing something to go into the file that could potentially tarnish the property, I think, in a way, if we're.
No, they may say, hey, I'm sick. I mean, or, or we're under consideration, or it's a negotiation, or, you know, what is the basis that you would say without consideration or with consideration?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm indifferent on the withdrawal part.
Yeah, I'm sort of indifferent, too.
Okay, so that.
Like withdrawals, I feel like people can, you know, because people could put in an application, and then they get their engineering back, and they say, oh, shoot, we can't do this, and they just withdraw, and that's it. I mean, it's sort of moot point, then. But continuance, I think, is a different.
Okay, all right, so, let me see, so in writing. So a written request that states the reason for, for it is not required.
Right, this is for the withdrawal.
If the, for withdrawal. A written request that states the reason for it is required, whether the request is made prior, so we don't need a written request, is what we're saying.
They either have to come in person, so we can make a motion or make a written request. And we would make a motion without them being here.
But we don't have to have, we don't have to have a reason.
Yeah.
We don't have, okay, so.
Without cause, I guess.
Pretty much everyone always requests a withdrawal without prejudice, is pretty much the standard request that we get.
Correct.
Okay, so. So it's not required, a written request that states the reason is not required, whether it's here or prior to, right? Okay.
And I don't know that that language, I don't, because I'm a non-attorney, that may have some significance without prejudice, I don't know.
I assume it basically means that, like, the staff report that maybe was prepared that was put in front of us and blah, 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 is gone. It's like it never existed. And so if they came back again, or if someone else came in on that parcel, it would not be part of what came before us.
They'd have to start over.
Okay, so a request, this is number five here, again, withdrawal. A request for withdrawal must be received in sufficient time to notify all interested parties before the hearing date.
I don't know how we enforce it, but I, for the public's sake, I think it would be really fair if by 5:00 on Monday.
Right.
It's in, so that someone could see online, it can get on our website, and.
So I think for Anna.
If we need to amend the agenda, we need 48 hours.
48 hours, okay, because you know who has contacted you, because they wanted the da-da-da-da-da, stuff like this, and so that's the only way we know of who's, we, all of us here, it's whether somebody's coming or they're interested.
Yeah.
And if we can notify them, so 48 hours is okay with you?
If we, if we amend, if we need to amend the agenda, we need 48 hours.
When do town offices close?
Prior to the hearing, prior to the hearing.
When?
Yeah.
4:30.
Date and time.
So town offices close at 4:30.
It would have to be clocked with the town clerk.
Correct.
By 4:00, basically, on Monday.
And if there's a Monday holiday, that pushes back to Friday.
Okay, I'm just gonna put 48 hours here, and then they're gonna have to contact, I mean, they, they'll figure out.
Yeah.
Because, you know, God knows, we could have this thing 40 hours. Okay, that's it for withdrawals, okay? Continuance is a little, a little different item. In the, in a number of the people have contacted, especially City of Boston was very cooperative, too. They have very, they have fairly strict rules. The cities, the medium cities like Lawrence, Framingham, et cetera, versus the big cities like Chicago, Pennsylvania, Boston, you know, the higher you go in the hierarchy, the more specific they get, because a lot of stuff happens behind the scenes, as you might imagine. So there's, in the continuances, I put, there's a lot of stuff that goes in here. For, so the ZBA may, at its discretion, grant a continuance, but is not obligated to do so. So a continuance granted by the board must include date and time of the continued hearing. Stuff that we've done, that's also included in the MGLs, but also in the other things. So I'm gonna skip over those, because when I put it all together, then you see it all makes sense. So I want to skip to the, I'd like to suggest we skip to the decision points, again, going through hearing and written. So this is for a continuance. Number six, "An appearance by the petitioner or the representative at the hearing is not required if a written request states the reason has been submitted prior to the hearing." I'm gonna go through all three. Appearance by the petitioner or representative at the hearing is required to formally submit the request and state the reason for the board's consideration, even if a written request has been made prior to the hearing. Or, "An appearance by the petitioner or the representative at the hearing is not required at the first request for a continuance, but for any subsequent request, an appearance by the petitioner or the representative is required to formally submit the request to state the reason for the board's consideration." Some, Philamet has the last one.
Yeah, that's pretty good. I like the last one. I still worry about the time of when they're submitting these things, just for the public's, again, I go back to the public of just, you know, was.
Okay, let me see if I have it in here. Okay. So let's be clear on this. "An appearance by a petitioner representative at the hearing is not required at the first request, but for any subsequent request, the petitioner or representative is required to be here and formally submit." We still haven't said, said, do they need to submit a written request, and this will let 48 hours come in, whether or not, well, we said, whether or not, in other words, if it's, one, we just approve, for the first one, they don't have to appear, for the second one, they do. But there has to be, the question is, should, do they have to submit a written request each time they want a continuance?
Would a written, I guess I'm asking staff, would a written request give you more shift in your schedule? Would it be beneficial? Because it's really not beneficial for us, it's more beneficial for you.
Well, they have to state a date certain, so that, that's, that's the limiting factor.
I guess what I meant is if you're working on something, or if you've got a lot of things going for the agenda, and they decide they're gonna push by two weeks or four weeks, is that beneficial or is it not? I would see that to be the benefit of a written request, as well as.
Well, this becomes.
Doesn't really matter, if they come here and they stand here and ask for a one week or, I mean, a two week or a four week, versus if they send a letter.
Right.
It's, it's, yeah, either way is fine.
Okay, yep.
So this is.
When did we find out about the Anderson one being canceled today?
After we ran into the record.
After we got here.
It's not canceled.
Continued.
I mean, continued.
Yes.
When did we find out, just?
We never really did, we didn't get anything in writing.
Right.
I mean, I think that should be a stiffer.
So, you know, so.
You have to come back in person the next time.
And it's not the end of the world if we ever deny a continuance, it just means they have to submit the same application again and re-notify all of the butters, which, I mean, again, I don't want to get ahead of us, but there's a level of.
Don't notify, notice is done once on a continuance.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, but if we denied a continuance and said, nope, we're not gonna let it continue, like, tonight, if we had said Attorney Schultz, if we decided, nope, we're just, he would have to send out, he'd have to, you know, submit the new application, pay the $400, and then the butters would get noticed again.
If we denied it.
If we denied it.
Without cause. If you denied it with cause.
Well, we have been denying the continuance, not denying the application.
If you deny the continuance with cause, that's it for two years.
I don't think a vote on a motion to continue denies it for two years.
You have to say cause, with cause or without cause. We haven't been.
I mean, we wouldn't be making a decision, we'd have a time extension that we could deny. If I didn't sign the time extension, then they would get their variance.
Right.
Granted.
That happened already.
Yeah, I know.
So.
But, I mean, the, the, yeah, someone could say, make a motion to deny the appeal, and if that, if we denied the appeal, then for two years, they would not be able to come back to the board. But if we denied a petition for a continuance.
With cause or without cause, just tell them what the law says.
I mean, what do you do about these cases like the one today, that have had, like, what is it, four or five continuances?
I think at some point you have to renotice, I mean, after certain numbers.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
Well, it's a three-year.
I wish the statute said that, but.
There's a three-year limitation on special permits. If a decision isn't made in that three-year period, then it's gone, okay? And it's gone for two years.
I mean, if legal could confirm what that is, I guess that the with cause or without, I don't quite understand it myself.
Well, with cause means that there is a reason the board thinks that this is full deraw and baloney and, and a delay, and, and you got a choice, we can hear it now, or we're gonna deny it with cause, which means it's done for two years.
I don't know.
I don't know.
That seems extreme to me, but.
I think, I think only that would hold up in court if, if it appealed it.
Of course it would.
Yeah.
That's what the law says.
The board might want to put together their ideas and then have the town, town attorney's office.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what we're trying to get to, just how we're trying to.
Yeah, we're trying to get to whether we want, whether we want it in writing.
I mean, I think a request for continuance needs, ideally, it's in writing.
I think it should be in writing.
Yeah.
I think it's that important, this is, it's.
Well, and then it also goes into the file for the public to see.
Yeah.
You know, it's in the micro, laser fiche thing.
Right, it's.
And, so it's there.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, again, for some of the people that are following these appeals that come before us, they're checking these things somewhat regularly, so they would have known, okay, a request for continuance was made, probably not gonna drive to Town Hall tonight, the board's probably gonna approve that.
Would we just, we would just do the same timeline, essentially, whatever we figure for the withdrawal, same timeline for the.
I think so, I think that's really the most.
So if you want a continuance, you gotta put it in writing 48 hours before the, whatever the words, the legal words we put here.
Seems reasonable.
I think it's totally reasonable, for everyone's time.
And those letters of requests are on Laserfiche, so if anyone was interested in coming, they would check the website.
Yeah.
So they would have to do this, like, before close of business on Monday?
Correct.
That would be 48 hours.
I think that's fair for everyone, I think it's fair for us preparing for a meeting, it's fair for the public, and it should be reasonable for the, for the applicant, they can prepare for that, to decide on Monday midday, hey, are we gonna go forward this week, or do we need to continue?
And what about occasions like today, where they say, no, I don't want to come because you only have four board members?
I mean, that's the hard thing, what is our consequence, like, what is our?
Well, in that case, then, that have to, if we notify, there's a lot of conditions in here, right?[1728.68] And we can change this anytime we want to.
Yeah.
Okay. In a place like that, it's simply, oh, you say, well, okay, the reason I don't wanna continue is I wanna, I want a continuance because it's not enough. Okay, fine. That's the reason.
I mean, in a case like today, I think if we had these rules in place and they're very, this is the the way we operate, I think we would say, we're denying the continuance, they have to reapply. We're not denying the permit. We're denying the continuance and saying, you gotta start over, notice all your butters, your back to your first strike can be, you know, a letter for a second one, you know? And I think that that should just sort of be the consequence for not making your decision by Monday.
And so.
The butters just get re-noted. I mean, I just worry about these butters. Like, if I lived next to these people and I was worried about this, I'd be like, okay, I came in March, then I came in April. You know, it's like, how do you keep up with this?
So do we just make that decision or is there, does it have to be re-noticed after X number of continuances?
No, 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 no.
We just make the decision?
Noticed once.
Okay.
That's all.
And then it's.
And then you, no, no.
Oh, I see. Okay, we decide or no, yes or no.
You can continue it fourteen times a day. It doesn't get noticed, it gets noted once.
Okay.
Okay. Unless it starts over again.
Yeah.
I see.
Okay, so we've decided on that. Now, there's there's a couple. So we're saying a written request for a is required forty-eight hours. Okay. Okay. Now, the, do, we can say no to this one, okay, but I had to put it in here because it wasn't discussed in some of the conversations I had. The duration period for a continuation, there's nothing in the law other than the three-year period. In other words, they can continue and continue and continue and continue unless the board says, that's it, you can't have it. The board can always deny the continuance. So rather than, so I guess my point is, my suggestion is not to put a time period, leave it up to the board and.
Based on the situation.
Based on circumstances, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if there's active stuff happening where they're getting traffic studies and things like that, it's fine. But, yeah, I think if it's.
And again, the number of times, that's the period for for continuance, okay? So they continue it fourteen times if it's within a year, okay? There's another question that came up, is the number of times a continuance may be granted? The big cities have, some of them have a limit on this. It's not in the general law. It's up to the town or the specifics.
And we have no restriction.
We have no restrictions on that. And we don't have to have one, but.
But we have the time extension that falls, the hard part is that that falls on us, the burden falls on us as the town and on me to sign. If we, if I don't sign that in time, potentially, they're getting there. Special permit or variance.
So we can say, hey, you can, unlimited number of times. Well, there is not a we don't throttle the number of continuances that they can have. The only throttle, we come here and we deny it. In other words, we don't, we're not, we're not being specific on that. It's up to the board to make the decision depending on the situations.
Do we have a feel, like, just, I mean, I'm not trying to make a set thing, but do we have a feeling of, like, when we think enough is enough? Continuances, not to set one in stone, but just, what do you guys think?
Alex was here, he was saying, you know, we've continued this thing for a year. Don't you think, Mr. Mr. Petitioner, that it's time to put up or shut up?
I feel like once we're to the third continuance, I mean, something is up. So, I mean, at least we can broach it on the third. We don't have to, I mean, we could just say, it's the third, let's let's make a decision here.
Have a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, but that would be an unwritten.
It would have to be unwritten.
That'd be just a.
Yeah, but I think would be reasonable because, again, once you get to that point, you kind of, we start to lose the details, too.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta go back.
Especially something we've already heard, you know, that started.
Right. Something goes six times. I'm not, we gotta start all over again, basically. I mean, even if you're reading it, the the conversation that happens here.
Board members that leave the board.
But he knows the story.
Okay, so so we won't put specifics in there, but we know that that's, okay, time requirements for withdrawal. And here's, here's a statement that I, obviously, I didn't make any of this up, I captioned it from. Request for withdrawal must be in writing or received before five P M. of the day that will leave five or whatever, five full working days, excluding Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, before the date of the hearing. We could say, received before five P M. of the day that will leave two full working days.
So it'd be Friday.
Well.
No, Monday, Tuesday. Well, I guess.
Friday would, if you did it by Friday, then you have two full working days before the day of.
Wednesday's a full working day before we get here.
Oh, but.
Right?
Right.
I really think by Monday, five o'clock, things need to sort of be like.
Well, we should keep it within four thirty, within your closing hours.
Four thirty for the town clerks.
If they can verify it, and it needs to be verified that they've received it.
Okay, and it has to be, does it come, it goes to the town clerk, right?
Sent and received.
As the, you have to clock it, Anna, is that how that stuff works?
Which?
But they come to you.
Can't say, oh, I sent it, you didn't get it.
They come to you, right? And you have to take it down there to get it clocked?
We we clock in the application, but a a request for continuance
Doesn't get.
Doesn't get clocked.
Don't clock those in?
Well, I mean, we would need to make a one, one check.
We said a time, I mean, Anna could see what time the email came in or didn't come in.
It's unfortunately an extra step, but she would have to at four thirty, look at the email, has anything come in? She doesn't have to do anything with it, she just has to.
It's closed, yeah.
It's closed.
And you can't get it continued.
Because then, after that, it's done.
And then our agenda is set for, you know, we know, okay, this is what's happening Wednesday. The public knows this is what's happening
Yes.
On Wednesday, and.
If it's specified that in writing includes emails.
A requ- a request, okay.
I mean, that's pretty much a given notice, but.
Yeah, agreed.
A request for withdrawal must be in writing and received before four thirty P M. on the day that will leave.
That that puts it on Anna, too. Like, if she leaves at four twenty-nine and somebody emails at four thirty.
That's fine, because it's it's clocked in on her email, so Monday, or on.
Tuesday morning, it still shows up.
She can, you know.
Yep.
I mean, the the issue is, if we're updating the agenda, it's forty-eight hours. So the agenda has to be modified forty-eight hours before, which would be four o'clock, like, she probably would need it by four o'clock, so four thirty, that has to be clocked. The agenda has to be clocked by the town clerk.
Okay. Now, that's, no, public comments, okay? Written public comment should be submitted at least forty-eight hours before the hearing? Or?
Mr. Chair, four thirty on Monday is is cutting it too close because we would have to send it to the town clerk to put it on the website. So.
So it has to be published forty-eight hours on the website before.
It has to be published forty-eight hours.
So it'd have to be like noon on Monday, basically.
Five, forty-eight hours.
Suggested.
Four thirty is a little tight.
Well, no, I'm, no, a request for withdrawal must be in writing and received before four thirty of the day that will leave two full working days before the date of the hearing, before the date of the hearing. Not the time, the date. So this says by Thursday, four thirty, no.
Friday.
Uh, excuse me. Friday, four thirty.
Yes.
Friday, four thirty.
Basically, end of the working week, so.
So then, and forty-eight hours would be Monday, technically, at seven P M.
That would give the town clerk enough time to clock it in. Yep.
Because it has to go on the board downstairs on the website.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, they have to be received and clocked in by four thirty Friday.
Yeah, but that just gives enough time because the the town clerk has to post it within forty-eight hours.
Right, 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 emails. Okay, now, public comments. I have two things here that I glean. One says, written public comment should be submitted at least forty-eight hours before, written public comment should be submitted at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing. Again, we do the forty-eight hours. Or information provided less than one week prior to a public hearing by any party may result in continuance. I don't know, but that's. So let's talk about the first one, because I I remember the second one should be, it should be number fifteen. Written public comment should be submitted at least, should be submitted. There's no penalty here, but this is guideline for the board, okay? This is Boston's guideline, by the way. Written public comment should be submitted at least forty-eight hours before the hearing. And part of the problem is, we ran into this in the solar farm, we were getting thirty letters the day before.
Very often, when there's something that's contentious in town, it's, yeah, it's like all the way up until, you know, probably when Anna's checking her last email at the end of the day.
Yep, and even after that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do the best we can, but, I mean, to give, this is guidance to say.
Yeah.
Forty-eight hours is reasonable, even end of day Monday.
Forty-eight hours is, I mean, I I hate cutting off the public like that, but at the same time, it's kind of fair for everyone.
They still have the ability to show up.
Yeah, and everyone, it's the same for everyone, for the applicant and for the public. That's the.
I mean, we've got a lot of opportunities now.
Denise or Herb, what do you guys think?
So staff can still accept public comment?
Sure.
After that point? I mean, we have to.
Yes.
I guess you have to receive it, but.
Do you have to read everyone?
No, it, it doesn't say must be, it says should be. That's why it's, that's why it's written accordingly. In other words, the guideline is, hey, we'd really like it forty-eight hours, but we can't say no.
Right.
We're not gonna say that. We said.
People will still read that as must, like, in a good way.
Because that's the idea.
You want to speed them up. That that does it.
And then if people have more to say, come in. And at that point, there'd be no more information submitted because the continuance and draws are all at that same.
And the inmate gets some after that, and she says, that's okay, we still.
But it quells the majority of after that.
And it sort of says, too, that we might not get a chance to read them.
Right.
Too, it just sort of puts us like, okay.
Right. Okay, now, this, this last, this is the last one, I think.
So if that was the case, Anna, would you put it in a separate folder or something in the Laserfish, like?
I would put everything up until the hearing in Laserfish, as long as I'm at my desk and I I can do that.
Go on generator.
What just happened?
Power went out.
Okay.
It was lightning?
Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna go, don't leave it, we're gonna go.
I mean, they didn't pay the bill again.
You should call, we might not even be.
It's still recording, the lights are still on, that we're on that one right now.
This one is, a lot of times, like, even the day of the hearing, we get new prints or new, you know, the petitioner is submitting new stuff, documents.
Yeah.
So this one says, information provided less than one week, less than one week, prior to the public hearing by any party may result in a continuous, may result in a.
May or should, yeah.
That's my big bone of contention, when we get, like, a ninety-page barraged with a ninety-page bunch of information that, you know.
Yeah, they shouldn't have put their application in until that was ready, really, you know, until they had all that prepared.
You know, they revise their plan.
Yeah.
Even if it's something we asked for.
Can request a continuance to.
Makes it even more difficult.
So this would say, this isn't for, I mean, this says, if you're providing information for it, we want it a week before.
Yeah, and it's the same.
Well, we accept it afterwards, of course, but, you know, but but this is the guideline.
And then, again, it's the same thing, you know, we're probably not gonna get a chance to really look at. It sort of puts us off the hook that, like, okay, that stuff we might not look at because we're prepared with the other.
That's it.
At the very least, though, nothing will be accepted for new information the day of the hearing, at the very least.
Well, I, I don't think.
We can accept it, it's just.
Yeah, legally, I mean, very carefully, legally, you can't say that. If it's submitted prior to the hearing, you know? That's why, like Boston said, must, it doesn't say must, should be.
Now, do we have the ability to say, well, I didn't get a chance to read it because I just got it now?
Well, remember, we always have the ability, you can just make a motion, I want to continue this.
Okay.
And you, like, you can just make that motion when something comes, because I'm not prepared, I didn't have time to read this.
Well, how many times have we had to say, this is not what was noticed? They changed something.
Multiple times, yeah.
We've had a bunch of times where they change it on the spot and that is not what was noticed, and we have to walk it back.
Well, those usually get continued for other reasons.
Well, at least gives us the ability, as Paul's saying, to do that, so, yep.
Okay, that's it. The next step here would be to to put this together in a form that would be on the website, that would be adopted. You know, if we approve it, et cetera, not go any approval step, we're just putting it together for a final review by us to see if this is, you know, to see what we meant, okay? And at that point, we'd go to the staffing issues of it. We would go to, if if it's okay, I mean, I would go to the staffing, the planning, the commissioner, the lawyers.
Yeah.
And and staff it correctly. Now, you have to, this has to be noticed, excuse me, it has to be on the agenda once we finally agree upon what we want.
And we make a vote.
Yeah, and I think there's two weeks, there's some, I'll go back into this, there is a, there is a requirement to hear it once and then vote on it the second time. So you have.
So it's, it's like a first read, second read, sort of thing.
Like the town council.
And then we probably, we probably have to open for a public comment on it, maybe, I don't know.
I'll.
I don't know what our authority is, but this would be a Karen Ober question, so.
Yeah, I'll find out.
I don't know, what what would you hope to get from Planning Board? Just input on it or?
Well, we are a function of them. The, if you look at the, at the authorities.
Would they have to approve this?
Uh, well, if you look at the authorities.
But I would say Karen Ober, like, legal would be the the next step, to go to Karen or Kate.
Because the body of it is good. It it addresses everything that we've been having concerns with. And at that point, it would be better if we could adopt it.
And then I think we could, you could present it to Planning Board, say, hey, here's what our board is thinking, and we've vetted it through legal. You know, we're hoping you would adopt something similar. You know, it's almost like the House and the Senate, like, do you want to make an amendment to this? Do we kind of agree on, okay, here's our joint.
See, they say withdrawal in application, this is Plan, Barstool Planning Board now, okay? But this is their rules, this is their their own rules and regulations, okay? An applicant may withdraw an application without prejudice by written notice to the board at any time prior to the first publication of the notice. After such public notice withdrawal, an application without prejudice shall be permitted only by a majority of the board. Well, that's what we do anyway. So, I mean, well, let's, let's, let's not belabor it.
I think we should, I think you should talk to Karen Ober or Kate Conley or one of the, one of the town attorneys off and say, hey, here's what we, we've had a good discussion about it, here's what we're thinking, what do you suggest, like, how would you like us to move forward?
Right.
And put it on them. If she says, go to Planning Board and present it there, talk to them, we'll do that. If she says, you know, write it up and you guys can take a vote on it, we do public comment, she'll know what.
Okay, so the next step is for me to put this together in a form that if we adopt it or with whatever, would become the beginning of the rules and regulations of the Town of Barstool zoning board.
Yes.
Honestly, I think the attorneys will appreciate it because it'll help them keep their clients lined up.
Yeah.
It it'll be helpful for everybody, it won't just be us.
Yeah.
I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Paul, for the work and the research and everything, it's amazing.
I I have another one coming out, too, that I'd like to. Well, I went through, has anyone been by Tractor Supply?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah, what a dump. And a lot of majority of the people that came before us, although we we couldn't rule on, were afraid that something like that would happen.
What happened?
Then why did they permit it?
Oh, it's, I would, I would say, at least on the Finney's Lane side, without exaggeration, probably thirty to forty percent of the of what they planted is either dead or dying.
Yeah.
And there's trash piles and pallet piles.
Yeah, that's what I see with the pallets.
But, so I talked to the building commissioner, and Brian, the trash is an issue he can go after. Okay, the the buffer, he can't, because we didn't clause it.
Didn't what?
Now, if you notice, if you listen to the, to the, to the appeal, excuse me, if you listen to the Planning Board's review hearing on the solar, solar thing, they've got that condition up, excuse my language, but, I mean, they, the the client has to put up a bond, they have to, you know, that, if anything dies in the three-year period, they have to immediately replace, you know? So what I'd like to do is, so I've talked to the Planning Board about this, and what I would like to do is put together something very briefly that would be a condition. So when we, we approve something like, you know.
A checklist for conditions?
It doesn't go through the Planning Board, it's just with us, but it requires a buffer, like, we've had a couple of those in Enterprise Way, that we say, okay, you've got to maintain it for three years, and if it dies in that period, you've got to replace it, or something, some words to that effect. Which, again, that would be acceptable to you folks.
Yeah.
And then we'd go through the lawyer, we'd take it through the same process, but, and then, and then, you know, and I talked with Jim about it. You know, and he's got all these bonds and all this, you know, a hundred and fifty percent of the, you know, so, oh, we're not going through all that. But but something to make it easier to enforce what we approve.
Yeah.
For Brian, Brian can't enforce. Okay, that's all I have.
All right, upcoming hearings, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. How's the schedule looking? Busy, quiet?
A little quiet.
Okay.
So we're good.
Summer.
Summer.
Twenty-eighth is Zoom.
Twenty-eighth is Zoom, and that would be the Anderson matter.
Is this a cell, accessory dwelling unit taking a lot of our our business away, or is it?
The withdrawals?